Invite everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, welcome everybody to the first meeting in February. My granddaughter's third birthday. Nice.
Feedback.
It's been a great age so far. Okay, I guess our finance director and our town administrator are both away. So our assistant town administrator, Ms. Michelle, is going to be handling a little bit of everything here today. Uh, but the financial reports in front of everyone. Uh, if you have any questions for Steve, we'll just have to defer, but do we have a motion to approve the financial report? We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The minutes of January eighteenth, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So, second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Michelle, your report. Do you want me to handle?
I'm good. Um, the first item on the agenda is Infomark operations and maintenance of water and wastewater treatment facilities contract, Sixth Amendment. This is presented for approval. Mr. Shu from Infomark is online and Jason is here as well. A message from Louis that the Sixth Amendment to Infomark's operation and maintenance contract is being presented to the board for approval. This amendment provides for additional personnel and equipment to more effectively operate and maintain the water, the town's water and wastewater facilities. It establishes the annual base compensation at two million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. And extends the contract expiration date to January thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. The amendment is necessary due to the expansion of the town's water and wastewater facilities associated with and in support of the South Fields development, which includes wellhouse four and an additional sanitary sewer pump station that will soon be developed.
Do we have a motion to approve the Sixth Amendment? Agreement with Infomark.
Zoom moves.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Uh, the, the only comment, and Jason, I have you in the room, I see Jerry's on the, uh, on the screen. Uh, it was brought to my attention today about, uh, uh, inside or water treatment plant, there's, uh, I, I guess there's a, some water monitoring. I, I would ask that we, we, help me understand that a little bit better about the, if that's creating more water usage? We're, we're really not sure, but I would ask that anything inside those buildings, you guys will make us aware of that. Hopefully.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to bring it out that, uh, it was made to my attention and, and it might be one of the reasons why we're, we're, uh, uh, not documenting all of our water. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Michelle.
And, uh, if okay with the board, I'd like to just read these waivers as I had them. And if we can just leave a mass approval, if that's okay.
Yep.
Um, so before the board, our request for alcohol waivers for the events, uh, downtown events, and, um, I inadvertently left off all that, so that's going to be at, uh, probably the February eighteenth meeting, that request will be presented. Uh, so the first one I have is, uh, downtown St. Patrick's Day events, and this also is going to include the celebration of Central's five-year anniversary on, uh, March eighteen.
Let's take them all one at a time.
Done. So, starting with, uh, St. Patrick's Day events, March seventeenth and March eighteenth, now they've asked for uh, the waiver and subsequent street closures from three P M. on, uh, Friday, the seventeenth to eleven P M. on Saturday, March eighteenth, and the reason for that is that there's going to be a, um, tent set up on Main Street right around the pallet and cage as part of Central's celebration.
Perfect. We have a motion to approve the St. Patrick's Day, March seventeenth through eighteenth on the times described.
Soon.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right.
Motion approved. Next one.
The next one being presented is for, uh, here in this building, the April first comedy roast event. And that's going to be from six P M. to eleven P. April one.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the comedy roast here in this building, April first, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next I have before you is for the Elton's Evening of Excellence and the Citizen of the Year Bank, but also here in this building, an alcohol waiver for April twentieth, and that's going to be five thirty to eight P M.
We have a motion to approve the Elton's Evening of Excellence, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
To move. Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next waiver before the board is for the Cinco de Mayo downtown event, May fifth, five P M. to eight P M.
Have a motion to approve the Cinco de Mayo event on May five, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next before the board is the downtown event, Red, White and Brew, July fourteenth, from five P M. to eight P M.
Have a motion to approve the Red, White and Brew on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
In a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the next event is the Elton High School Alumni Event, that's October sixth, uh, five P M. to eight P M., and there are just FYI road closures associated with several of these events, and those are placed in front of me.
Have a motion to approve the, uh, which one, the Turkey Trot?
Elton.
Oh, the Elton High, yeah, Elton High on October sixth.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, uh, November twenty-second, the Turkey Trot Event Downtown, um, and I have five P M. to eleven P M. Is that time correct?
We have a motion to approve the Turkey Trot, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Soon.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
What was the time bringing for that?
I have five P M. to eleven P M.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Another question.
Question?
Why can't you do, um, that now? I overlooked it and, um, didn't put it on the agenda, but if you want to add it to the agenda, I don't think it's that much of an issue. I was gonna put it on February, um, eighteenth, you want to just do it now? Ball Fest kickoff party, what do you know?
Well, here's a here's a couple of questions I have for you, there's a few of them here. Uh, did we do the Arts Fest already?
The Arts Fest doesn't have liquor waiver, but you'll see a, um, a road closure permit, um, application, um, that's in there, and that's why I tabbed all those stages.
Okay, so that's not a, not a, that's just a road closure.
You're right, that's not a
The road closure is just a road closure. The car cruise is just a road closure. No, that?
There was no, um, liquor waivers requested for the car cruising?
No, the car cruises with their jump into June event.
And that's a child's family, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's already been taken care of. Let me just go through these quick before we do the Fall Fest. Uh, that's the Jump in the June. They're waiting brew. Okay, let's do the Fall Fest and Halloween, or have we already done that?
But there's not an alcohol where I should say that either.
Well, listen, I've seen some of these guys out. So let's do the Fall Fest. We're ready to go.
Alright, so we have, um, Fall Fest kickoff party, and that's going to be Friday, September fifteenth, five to eight P M. And that's, that's what you want the waiver for the kickoff party, not for the second day of Fall Fest, is that correct?
We'll need it for the second day.
Oh, I'm sorry, baby pardon, it says two-day kickoff, so we have the fifteenth and sixteenth.
Have a motion to accept the special event for the Fall Fest.
Zoomed.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, ladies? Did we miss anything? All right, perfect. All right, Michelle, you're up.
And the next item on the, um, agenda is the proposal from KCI Technologies to, um, to the upgrade of wall number three to address the need to implement a water treatment process to eliminate PFAs organics detected in this water, and I asked, um, KCI to come and present in person any questions that the board may have.
Okay, Ryan, good seeing you.
Wow, thanks for having me. It's good to see you.
All right, tell us a little bit about this proposal and, uh, what we'll accomplish with it.
Sir, um, would you like me to give a little bit of background on how we got here, or can we just go from the proposal and move into it?
Uh, I, I, I don't think it would hurt to, to, uh, tell us a little bit about it, and I think, uh, we've got the press here in the, in the room, he might want to get some additional information on this.
Very good. So, real quick recap, PPOS in general, PPOS is an umbrella term for, for eighty thousand M D E chemicals. Uh, they're known as forever chemicals because they don't break down in nature, and it's no longer legal to produce these chemicals. Um, but it's the remnants that have been used over the past few decades that are, that are the issue, because they simply don't break down in nature. And so this, this prop, this PPOS challenge, it's nationwide and worldwide, actually. Um, but KCI have been doing several PPOS projects throughout the country. And with, with Elton, a few months ago, M D E tested the different water supplies, um, and like most water supplies, when you test for PPOS, you typically find them, it's somewhat convicted at this point. Um, in particular, well, number three had a PPOS concentration for a certain compound, P F L A, of twenty-one point eight parts per trillion. So this is, this is on a whole another level of small concentration. They're usually in treatment, we thought about parts per million. Um, this is six zeros to the right, smaller than that, from a percentage. Each, PPOS is relatively new in terms of EPA regulating these chemicals. In fact, PPOS hasn't even established set hard maximum contaminant limits for these compounds, that they're in the process of doing so. Their latest schedule shows that as early as the end of this year, they may have hard and fast limits for probably combinations or fatalities of all the different PPOS chemicals, how much is allowed to be in water to make sure it's safe to use in this situation. So, when we first got this news a couple of months ago, uh, Louis Jordan pitched out to us, we started doing research, talking to local, local entities, local companies who have installed PPOS treatment here successfully within like the mile radius. Um, and also local water companies such as Artesian, who's already done some PPOS projects. Um, trying to be, figure out the best way to go about this, this project. And what we learned, and I'll, I'll try to be quick, but what we learned was that it makes sense to do an upfront study with a conceptual design so that we can learn basically the scope of the project, how much, so well free right now, it has a facility in the building there with all the treatment processes. But we're gonna, this project likely resulting in new treatment units coming into it, probably activated carbon, maybe some ion exchanging. And so we're gonna look, need to look at expanding the building and what that's gonna do to the site and E N S and store margin at any point. Um, we're gonna work with all stakeholders additionally, not only EPA and M D E, but also Jason and folks in Infomark will work with the town um, to make sure that, you know, operation and maintenance and the, uh, everything's handled and everything's considered during the upfront preliminary stage. So that once we submit the report to Elton, we're gonna know what that final design and that final construction is gonna look like. So we'll be able to give detailed cost estimates and schedules. And then there's gonna be a pilot study. Because every source water that you test is unique. No two, e- even if it comes from the same aquifer, you do a, uh, a, a sample of well three, it's been different than your other wells. And the way we treat PPOS mainly with activated carbon and ion exchange, the other constituents in the water, other organics will have an impact on how that one treatment unit removes PPOS. Some of the other organics can take away some of the surface area. And so we end up doing a six to twelve month pilot study on that specific raw, raw drinking water so that you know exactly what that medium needs to look like in the details of, of the treatment train. But all that can happen after the conceptions, because we're gonna be able to size everything preliminarily, so we can get moving on, you know, the survey, the, the construction plans, all the permitting, takes time. So we're, we propose to do the pilots and ball that's going on, have parallel paths. In addition to, to that being, that upfront concept design work being done, we're gonna issue a report, and it's gonna, it's gonna discuss PPOS in general, this is a new topic for, for everyone, so we just wanna explain it, explain what it means, explain what the regulatory process is, talk about the three different main types of treatment, the two I already mentioned, and the reverse osmosis as well. We'll discuss the site, the building upgrade considerations, um, how we're gonna utilize the existing treatment train, where the additions are gonna go, what needs to happen from the sense of your overall site to fit everything in. We'll also discuss operation maintenance, new equipment, um, that Elton doesn't have, so we have, we'll have a section on how to deal with the media and how to replace that, things of that nature. We'll also, um, tackle construction costs and the post schedule, and we'll talk about different bidding options for this. Different ways to bid this, to make sure that you're getting, you know, the contractual with the experience and also certain manufacturer, certain included that we know works well. And on that, on that note of, of bidding and the cost estimate, we'll also discuss funding options that are out there, as you can imagine, EPA is, is, is providing a lot of funding opportunities for this PPOS treatment because it's, and in the water wastewater industry, we're gonna be talking about this for the next two decades. That, Michelle and I were talking the other day. It hasn't hit yet, right? In a couple of years, we're gonna be talking about waste, wastewater treatment requirements for PPOS removal, because this doesn't break down. And so if it gets through your water stream, um, E J. is gonna dictate that it's treated before it gets back into the water again at the end of the wastewater cycle. So it's a stop, it's a topic that's, that's super stiff. So, yes, one, we're here at least, then I'll told, I have copies of the proposal, if anyone hasn't seen it.
I think we all have it.
Okay.
We have it, and, uh, I guess, uh, just the th- these PPOS, we had a presentation that was done and, and just, uh, the, the understanding, this could have came from anywhere, really, right? Anywhere in the offer, it could have came from fire comb, from, uh, from, uh, an airplane crash that happened years ago, right?
Yes, it's very prevalent around military bases, around, around, around air force, um, but those are, those are big faults, but, but it really is almost everywhere. Think about, um, twenty years ago, if you bought those nonstick cooking things. I mean, anything related to, to, you know, nonstick, fire retardant, uh, water retardant, uh, PPOS was heavily used in the manufacturing process.
You're already saying all of this, right?
It's, 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 yes.
So, everything that you just talked about, I see here that you had a proposal, project piece, uh, defined at thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, billing time, uh, and material based on already approved schedule rates, direct expenses not to exceed twenty-two hundred dollars for this work. Uh, board, I think we can probably move forward with this, or if everyone's all right with it. Uh, have a motion to approve this agreement with, uh, KCI to move forward with the uh, preliminary, uh, report proposal for the PPOS.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. How do you like that?
Thank you very much. No questions?
No questions.
I was trying to be quick to leave it open for questions.
No, no, the only questions I have, John Downs, I got you on the, on the horn there, you can unmute yourself. I just wanna be, uh, sure about this. Uh, the, the town board had a presentation done several months ago, and, uh, uh, Jay Gallow was representing, uh, the class action litigation for State of Maryland. I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm ready to move forward with that, John. Are you okay if we enter into that agreement?
Yes, I think, I think that's probably the best approach, actually, just for a little bit of background, for people that may not be familiar with how class action lawsuits proceed. Um, the plaintiff, in this case, Jay and, and all his various clients file suit, and they manage that lawsuit through the process, typically end up in some sort of negotiated settlement. Um, and, and places like the town of Elton can elect to be in the class or not, which means if you're not in the class, you're not included in anything that comes of it, you're on your own. And it would be expensive, exceedingly expensive for the town of Elton and any other town to go it alone. So I think this is the wisest thing. Jay's reputable guy, and I know that he is enlisting other municipalities as well, and so actually I recommend that we do so.
Thank you, John. Do you have any issue with that, Ryan?
Well, no, just a quick follow-up from Mr. Downs, and I'm, I'll mention this next time I talk to Jay, and just for, for the town. Just let me know if there's any particular, specific types of documentation I should follow, any reporting I should follow to, to satisfy, um, what you're gonna need for the class action student.
Yeah.
I, sooner we know that, the better. We're gonna get started, by the way.
Okay.
Need to move forward with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then, uh, do you need a motion on that, you think, or do you want just to move forward with it?
I think that it, I don't think that the board needs to move it.
I don't think so neither. We're gonna enter into an agreement with them, and, uh, let's get part of that class action litigation.
If I could get the, the email so that I can, I can forward and stay in touch and, and forward anything that's, uh, relevant, uh, that would be good. If you could perhaps leave the, your email with, um, with Michelle, and I'll pick it up next week.
Perfect. Thanks, John.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned government funding, it could be available, is there a timeframe for that, or is it open?
There's no specific timeframe right now, and it's um, on a nationwide level, they passed the thirty-five billion dollar water, it's up to bill, uh, in the past year, and that's gonna take a while to filter through EPA, to M D E's S R F program, the state revolving fund. And it would be the, the state revolving fund for municipalities like, like Elton, like for the five. So let's
That hasn't.
It's, 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 it's annual, that, that's, or it's annual, this extra, extra money that each day is is, is, is attributing to specific water treatment projects. That's what's new within the past year, and, and it'll take a while for that extra pot of funding.
So, would, would you initiate that grant applications, or something we have to do?
So we, we do, and we can, um, and, and that's, that will be up to, to the town, we've certainly done it for other local municipalities around here. Uh, my, my experience with M D E's funding programs, and, well, we already have a meeting request into M D E to discuss this specific project. And when we go, we meet with them. We make sure that they're in agreement with what we're doing, and we, we get their input, um, it's better to get them on our team initially, and that's, and that's when I would ask them about any funding opportunities and, and to make sure the town's.
Yeah, we all understand.
Yeah, yeah. Well, part of this report would be to, to find out what those opportunities looks like and make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, a few things on my report here, uh, uh, I guess it was, uh, maybe over the weekend, uh, we had a couple, uh, four-inch downspouts. Maybe they're eight-inch downspouts that were, uh, removed off the front of the building, uh, by vandalism. And, uh, we had our public works department came in and, uh, repaired, and we're gonna get a couple of these downspouts, but, uh, I think we're gonna tweak the way that we were doing these downspouts before, because they were, they were bronze, I'm sure, but when someone took them, they probably thought that they were brass, or I mean, uh, copper, they probably thought that they were copper. And, uh, but coming to find out, they're, they're, uh, made of bronze, and I don't think the resale value on bronze is as valuable as copper, but they removed two of our, uh, downspouts out there. And if you see in the back of the room there, there's a hole in the back. We actually had to go in and cut a hole into the mayor commissioner's room, and it went over in the ticket booth area to make those repairs, but, uh, the guys did a good job of, uh, getting in there and, uh, repairing, uh, for those things were, were broken off.
Did our cameras capture anything? There aren't any cameras on that side of the building. That landed my voice. And then I got it now, I'm clear.
The, uh, I believe that that's all I have. Well, actually, there is one additional thing, uh, uh, prior to the meeting, I was having a conversation with, uh, uh, Gene and, and, uh, Rob and Michelle, and I think that Charlie may have walked in and Earl came in, but, um, I, I think what we wanna do, and Andy, I'm, I'm glad you're in the backpack here. I'd like to, uh, think about coming up with a, a new mission statement for our employee handbook, and, uh, a mission statement that, uh, I, I, I think I, I definitely want some input on it, but, you know, every employee of the town is an ambassador of the town. And, and I want them to be aware that they are ambassadors. I, I want them to be aware that, uh, if they see something uh, that's for the good of the town of Elton, let's make sure that they understand that's what we re, that's what we want out of them. We want all of our employees to think that way, whether it's, uh, uh, seeing a, a, a water main break, or, uh, whether you're seeing trash on the side of the road, or, uh, uh, an area that might need rubbing, or a trash can that might be out in the road, or, uh, uh, someone needing help on the side. You know, that's what we do, and, and I really wanna get that message across in a very clear, concise, and positive way. So I, I'm gonna ask for your help to help word this, but I, I want everyone to know they are ambassadors, they're the first line, they're the front line. Uh, people rely on, on, uh, our employees and, and, uh, I, I just think we need to mold that a little bit better. So that was all I had. Gene, you have anything today? Charles?
Michelle, there was a little, not difficulty, but, uh, what we talked about, the road on Stockton Street.
Yes.
Is there any update on that?
No, um, I haven't heard any updates or, um, anything from David Bestie except for the, the, the mess that the deeds are associated with all of the parcels on the west side of, um, South Street, but we just had a preliminary conversation that there may be a different way to go. Well, I'm not the engineer, and certainly can't say, but, um, maybe try to relook at South Street and see if there might be a way to avoid the, the tangled.
That's what I was asking, yes.
Yeah, so no immediate update.
Might not be a double lane parking, but just think of it.
Access.
Just an access.
Yes. A safe access.
I don't know.
Uh, there's just a couple of comments, uh, that was, um, concerns brought to me that has, me, there are foxes in the area, I think was coming off of, uh, High Street and used to be, I guess they followed that, but around that area. So, um, I've mentioned it to Mark, um, on the, and, um, just wanted to make my C's, uh, uh, notice where the, yeah, there's a group I mentioned, I wanted, I totally, um, uh, resident to take a picture, make him, that they see, um, whatever, send it to us, so, um, other than that, um, but, you know.
Those foxes must have moved around because they were sighted on Duffle Street, uh, Hunter Street, uh, over at the Presbyterian Church, so.
Yeah, it's about that, yeah.
Have we contacted animal control?
Oh, they just, uh, they set live traps.
And police, I think, responded, uh, last week on, they wanted to call, so they're aware.
There's, uh, uh, of course, I want, I wanna say there, uh, there's about seventeen acres along the Big Elk Creek uh, behind my house, and, um, they're always back there. There's, there's definitely, you know, that be. I said, but I can tell you, I've seen them go up, meet, uh, eat all people's porches, they'll eat the, whether it's dog food or cat food. I'm sure that, uh, they're probably around the Big Elk Mall in the rear. Uh, because there's a lot of feeding of the cats through there.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that they're over there, but you'll see less cats if you see more foxes. Robert?
Oh, just a couple of, uh, points of interest for the group and the community that the comedy roast, which we almost lost, was saved and revived at the last minute when Henry Hamilton and the Arts Council stepped forward and agreed to be this year to then. So we're getting ready for that on April first, three month, three weeks after that is gonna be Teen Elton's Fishing Rodeo, I'm gonna start gearing up for that real soon. And you will hear more about that in future reports.
What was the date on that?
April twenty-second with a rain date of the twenty-ninth, I believe it was, to be following.
Thank you.
And that's all I had.
All right, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone for the good of the town, I think Mrs., uh, Ron? Brown? Brew?
No, I think.
Would like to come up and address the board? Do you want to address the board about the, or no? Do you wanna address the board about the, or no?
No.
You're right.
Address the board, I just wondered if there's anything that I need to do.
Are you still in coordination? Look, I'm, I'm gonna kind of address it if I could. And then just interject with me if I'm saying anything incorrect. So there was some property that was on, uh, Old Baltimore Pike and Delancey Road that was annexed into the town, be, uh, I'd say maybe fifteen years ago, twelve years ago.
That was about two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven. And, uh, I think everything was kind of like under contract, uh, to do a housing development in that area. Well, there were several homes there that, uh, including yours, that, uh, currently don't receive any water and sewer. They don't, I think you get trash pickup, but, uh, uh, and then paying town taxes really for not receiving any services that you're not on water and sewer. So they're on, uh, uh, county well and, uh, county, county sewer system. So in the course of, uh, since two thousand twelve, uh, there's been two families there that have paid close to twelve thousand dollars in town taxes and we've never been able to provide them with water and sewer to be part of the town. And the question came in that they would like to deannex out of town like I think a couple of the other parcels did, uh, when I first came onto the board. Uh, that's the easy part. Uh, the more complicated part is that, uh, there's an advertising cost along with this, which could be as much as.
I, I'm thinking probably between the two parcels, probably over two thousand dollars.
About two thousand dollars of advertising cost with our local seats a week. So I know Matt's here and we're gonna get him to waive those fees. Now, I'm not doing that, man. But what I'd like to, uh, ask the board to do and, and, uh, I think we gotta take these case by case. Uh, uh, and, and, and I'd like to move forward and waive these, uh, two thousand dollar fees so that, uh, uh, I, I think that they were steered down the wrong road here.
I know, yeah, I agree. Does it have to be in this newspaper?
Yes, it has to be in a, um, a newspaper of, uh, circuit, general circulation. I checked with the gentleman, Stan, and his newspaper, the county general. It's not a newspaper of general circulation.
So I.
The only thing we know is.
I don't think we need to vote on this.
Well, no, actually, I don't believe that you do. Um, I think just the permission to.
I just want the board to be aware of and I'm good with it.
Curious question.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
If you don't get a water sewer bill, how did you feel?
They didn't up until recently, until it was, and then, um, it was seen these, um, the properties along Delancey Road were not receiving trash bills. So trash bills were initiated and then Ms. Walker and, and you came in to talk with me about it. And then we went through the whole history of the, um, Nemec deannexation. And that was our very first and only one, Mark Nemec. He, I just, for the sake of the record, he did pay about two thousand dollars in, uh, fees to that base property.
I think we're all good with it.
Yeah.
We're all good with it. We don't wanna lose you, but I'm just, I, it, it, we'd love to have you, but the fact is, there's no value. I mean, let's call it, call it correctly.
And, and if I may just add, now it is, as we talked about previously, just like with an annexation, it's going to be a, a several week process to go through it, but we'll get it started. There'll be meetings before, um, the, the public hearing and then the adoption. And then as we continue moving forward, but I, I will get the, the thing started and I'll keep you abreast of the, of schedule.
And, uh, you know, while we're still on that, I, I wanted to bring up another, uh, little hiccup that I think's gonna come down the road a little bit. There's a, um, there's a parcel, uh, there's a, there's a lot, a building lot on White Hole Road between, um, uh, let's see, I guess that would be between the Harveys and, uh, Route two thirteen on the right-hand side. None of that area on the right-hand side is in the town limits, but currently, uh, you need water and sewer currently are policy. I, I think it's been an unwritten policy that for them to get water and sewer from us, they had to be annexed into the town. That na, that vacant lot kind of is attached to the Holly Hall District. And, uh, I want the board to think about this a little bit. That one lot by itself, we could, we could really push it to annex into the town. But I think in the best interest of that lot, uh, and the service that we can provide, it may be one lot that we don't wanna bring into the town of Elton. Uh, I'm thinking about trash pickup. Uh, uh, in particular, the hiccups we're having with it currently. And for, I know we're gonna miss it. I know we're gonna just continue to miss that. So I want the, I want the board to think about, uh, allowing that one lot to have water and sewer from the town at the double the rate and the hookup fees, but not to annex it in. So give, give it some thought. I, I think we're, we would save ourselves some, some heartaches if we do that. And i- if anyone out there knows me, I don't like to lose anything in our town. I wanna keep you, I wanna keep the other lot. I wanna keep, I, I'm a, I'm a pro annex guy. But I think in the best interest of the town, I think that there's situations that we can't to, uh, step back.
Well, how are you gonna qualify? Was it across the street?
Across the street, across the street would be the, uh, uh, storage facility, the old Walmart.
So it wouldn't have been in our land across the street?
I would say that they're getting, their, their water would be on the Holly Hall side.
Yeah, but I mean, you have to be next to.
Yeah. Uh, I think that they were gonna annex because of the road.
Okay.
It was a, a road, uh, touching the road annexation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I appreciate you stepping up and even suggesting this. My only question is, what would be a reason to stay annexed to town? Regardless to any services there would have, that would then be trapped. I mean, are, are there any plans for bringing water up the road? Should I stay here? Well, I mean, you've heard of this.
I, I, I think, you know, I could probably research that and give you a little bit better answer, but there's been, I, I had personally sat at that table right here, uh, over the last couple of months with a group that wanted to come in and, and build a townhouse community. And they're gonna need water and sewer, but I, I still think it's a ways away.
Where is the townhouse?
It would be on the corner of.
Of Delancey?
Corner of Delancey and Old Baltimore Pike. And, uh, uh, they would have to provide, uh, it's, it's a, it's well over a million dollars worth of infrastructure. And I don't believe it's gonna happen. My God, I just don't see it happening. Uh, Ryan, do you know anymore about it? I don't even know if they were included.
He came in a couple of times.
I wasn't, wasn't in.
Yeah, so I'll have you a better answer here shortly, but, but to answer it, if I was in your shoes, I, I think I'd be doing the same thing. I, I think I would. You're, my gosh, you're paying a thousand dollars a year for police protection and trash, and you're still paying a little bit for trash.
Yeah, we're always.
Yeah, and then we're gonna get you for three times the bill.
And you didn't have to say less than.
We're gonna make, put a little note that we're gonna get her. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton? Online, in the building, meeting adjourned.